Welcome to our board meeting. I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance, so could we all stand?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Here.
Trustee Rocco? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Kassera?
Here.
Trustee Lotner?
Here.
Trustee Azora?
Here.
President DiCipio?
Here.
A quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. You know, it's a bittersweet night tonight. It's bitter because one of our friends and officers and chief and just a great man for our community is, will be leaving us, but sweet because we've got another gentleman that's moving into his position and we're looking forward to that. I'd also like to, I know there's a lot of dignitaries here tonight. One person I would like to introduce who is back, he's a past officer, a past president of the Village of Westchester, Mr. Pulia, welcome. Thank you for coming out. Julia?
Hi, everyone. Tonight is a special night. It's a night to not only recognize all of our fabulous employees, but also to recognize and say goodbye to Chief Rompa. Chief, I did not want to get anything wrong, so I had to write it out. So you'll all have to forgive me. I typed it up and I'm going to read from it tonight because I didn't want to leave anything out. Besides, some of this is very detailed because I went into your personnel file to get some of these tidbits out. He has a fantastic personnel file. Chief Edward Rompa. It is an honor to recognize Chief Rompa for his contributions to the LaGrange Park community. He has served the LaGrange Park Police Department since 1999. Ed became chief in 2014. When he was appointed, the first words out of his mouth were, "I have a lot of heart for this department." He repeated that in a newspaper interview and he added, quote, "We give top-quality services to our residents and that's going to be our daily challenge as a staff every day to do the best that we can." Quote, "As an agency, we are lucky and as a department, we have a lot of support from our residents and from our village board." And that goes a long way. All of that support is what makes us able to do our job. Before the chief role, Ed previously served as commander since 2005. Prior to that, Mr. Rompa served as a sergeant, officer in charge, detective, and as police officer. Additionally, in his tenure here, Ed has been a spark plug tutor, been a bike safety instructor, adopted a cop summer camp organizer, Officer of the Year in 2001, worked with Dumeg. I didn't know that. He worked as a columnist. Bet you don't remember that, huh, Ed? Writing a monthly column on crime prevention in the suburban life. He was the coordinator of a 2011 safety tip calendar. He was a Niemert instructor and he even apprehended a thief in the Village of Bowling Brook. When he started as chief, I never had a doubt that Ed would give the position everything that he had: his attention, training, knowledge, energy, vision, leadership, and compassion. And he gave all of those things. But what I did not anticipate is that he would really come to redefine the term "community policing." He brought the proactive strategy to new heights by introducing coffee with the chief, coffee with the cop, the door hanger program, walk and talks, shop with the cop. Under Chief Rompa's leadership, the police department brought national night out. He and his police officers really worked hard to elevate this program, even receiving national recognition. Chief Rompa helped to build a stronger and lasting relationships with so many in our community, many of whom I see here tonight, which is the backbone of community policing. He met with all the schools regularly. He met with the youth commission, the chamber, the local churches, the neighboring communities, the businesses, business owners, residents, childrens, teens, potential troublemakers, federal, state, and county agencies. He never rested and always rolled up his sleeves and got involved, gave a hand, and offered ideas. He was also a willing advocate, a listener, and a participant in the community, getting to know neighbors and residents who became friends and partners in the partnership of community. Some of the feedback I've received from residents over the years, really, I've never seen anything like it. I've heard from so many who have said, "I love our police department and I love our chief. Our officers are the best and Chief Rompa is wonderful." I even heard from residents who have said, "Our chief," they didn't exactly know his name, I can't believe there's somebody that doesn't know your name, but that big, strong guy that patrols the neighborhood, I feel like he takes it personally, that he wants to keep us safe. And I can tell you that it's my experience that this is true. Chief Rompa is a professional who takes his role and his responsibility personally and has great pride and honor. In looking through Ed's personnel file, I found a number of words and phrases that were used specifically to describe Ed. He is a self-starter. He is full of ideas. He has optimism and enthusiasm. He comes to work every day with a vision, constantly seeking new challenges. Ed is well-organized, courteous, and outgoing. He has great people-oriented qualities and character and a genuine interest in law enforcement. His priorities in life impress me and his responsibilities are handled in an orderly fashion. Ed is someone who energetically seeks to encourage all to reach their potential while building a genuine interest in them to reach their goals. Niemert is lucky to have people like you teaching. In his career, Ed has received numerous letters and thanks, accommodations, from the residents of surrounding communities, local schools, the Illinois State Police, and others. I will speak from just two such letters from residents. Quote, "I am writing to praise the work and say thank you for the efforts of Detective Rompa in solving the case within one week. Detective Rompa kept me informed, returned my calls, and was very patient with me. I think at times he extended his duty in handling the emotion I brought to conversations we had. The way with which he handled himself while interacting me was not only professional, but admirable and much appreciated." Second letter. Quote, "I am writing to express my gratitude regarding a recent situation that required assistance from your police department, in particular, your detective Ed Rompa. Detective Rompa has a quality that he may not be fully aware of, and that quality is empathy. This is the ability to know what instinctively what the next person is thinking and feeling. He sees the unspoken word. I feel strongly that we are fortunate to have someone like Ed in our community." End quote. I can say without reservation that it has been an absolute privilege to work with Chief Rompa. In my experience, Chief Rompa has always demonstrated gratitude for having had the opportunity to work with individuals up on the dais and with the residents, businesses, and leaders in the community. It is also my experience that Chief Rompa is incredibly proud of the individuals who he serves with in the police department. He has told me on so many occasions that he is both proud and honored to work with each and every person in the police department. It is not an easy job, that, of a police officer. It's really tough. And the chief is no exception. However, we're glad that you picked LaGrange Park. Thank you, Chief Rompa, for your service to our community all 20 years. We will miss you. I'll turn it over to President DiCipio.
Thank you, Julia. I can't say much that goes beyond that because chief is everything that Julia said and more. In my position and all the trustees, we get the privilege of meeting different people throughout the community and in all the walks of life. And we get to know these people intimately and I've got to say, one of the ones that I've got to know intimately and know how he works and functioned is Chief Rompa when he came to me four years ago and said, "Do you mind wanting this job?" There was a passion in him that I never saw before in anybody. And I knew that he was the right man for the job. And his leadership skills, his integrity, his passion for this position, and his fellow officers, I mean, we have the best police department and the best fire department around. Don't compare us, and a lot of it is due, all of it is due to the leadership of Chief and Julia and our staff. And to see Chief at work every day and to see him lead this department, as Julia said, it's not easy being a police officer today. There's a target on every one of our backs because you're darned if you do and you're darned if you don't. So it's a very difficult job, but Chief handled it with integrity. He walked the beat. I mean, I go to Ace Harbor and say, "Oh, we love your chief." He's walking around the neighborhood. And you don't, you don't hear about that anywhere else. And that was, that's what makes the Grange Park unique and Chief certainly has brought that to our community. I know the board would like to say some things, and we'll get that opportunity later, but it's been a privilege, Chief. Your family, you have brought a sense of being here that will never be surpassed. Love and respect you and we wish you well in the future. It's been a quick four years and if anybody can go on at the top of their game, Chief is doing that right now. We wanted to see another 10 years out of this guy, but him and, Chief and I used to work out together. I stopped a long time ago. I don't know how he fits, you know, he wears his heart on his sleeve, so he's got a pretty big heart, this guy. So I'd like then we have a proclamation for you, Chief. Whereas Ed Rompa, retiring chief of police of LaGrange Park Police Department, has served in law enforcement for the last 20 years and is well-respected by fellow law enforcement officers, civilian employees, volunteers, community partners, and residents. Whereas his career began in LaGrange Park in 1999 as a full-time patrol officer and then went on to serve as sergeant, officer in charge, detective, commander, and chief in 2014. Whereas Ed's tenure in law enforcement will conclude with his retirement to the village on Friday, June 7, 2019. Whereas during his tenure as chief, the village entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the villages of LaGrange and Western Springs to create the Lions Township Area Communication Center to provide emergency dispatch services, which has resulted in increased efficiencies and technological advancements for our police department. Whereas Chief Rompa elevated the village's community policing program by introducing new programs such as walk and talks, shop with the cop, coffee with the chief cop, and the door hanger program in an effort to provide meaningful proactive crime mitigation strategies to keep LaGrange Park community safe. Whereas not only has Ed initiated such positive measures to address the modern-day challenges of law enforcement, he, along with other members of his department, have mentored and trained new officers here and in the region to be proactive in all the areas of effective policing. Whereas his knowledge, dedication, positive attitude, and meaningful professional history of service to others have positively impacted the village as an organization and a community and now therefore be it proclaimed, recognizing retiring chief Ed Rompa for his legacy of service in law enforcement and his contributions to our community extend our sincere appreciation for his work and wish him the best on his retirement from the Village of LaGrange Park Police Department. Before Chief speaks, I would like to have any comments from the board that he wants to bring to Sandy at this point. Chief would like to hear from you before he leaves. Anyone want to say anything? Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Rompa, you've come full circle. We first met in 99. I've seen you come up through the ranks. I'm proud to call you a friend. I appreciate working alongside you as long as I have. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for experience. I'm going to miss you. Michelle, you have to bring him back to the neighborhood whenever you get a chance. Please. Thank you.
Chief Rompa, I won't get into a lot of details, but I just want to say that from some personal experiences, I'll share with you a story about being in a corporate environment and look out here and there's a lot of people that I know that, that are retired and perhaps you can identify with this, that one of your goals is to retire with dignity. And Ed, I will say, you are retiring with dignity. Congratulations.
Trustee Russell?
Chief, I just want to say thanks. It's been, been an honor to know you and, and to watch you work and grow. And one of the best things that can be said is, is what you leave, who you were, but what you leave in this town. It's safety, it's statistics, it makes it that much more desirable, but you got, you always got community. And that's what we are in, in the community policing and the relationship with the department within here. As somebody who grew up here and seen how things have changed over the years, I'm proud to have known you as, as a professional level. Hope to still get to talk to you now and again. And I wish you the best in all you've done and thank you for your dedication, your loyalty, your heart, your enthusiasm, all of it. It made us all better.
Before I can turn it over to Chief, he's going to, I'm sure, make these introductions, but to really tell the size of the man, and I don't mean physically, I mean with his heart and who he is and the leader that he is and the compassion that he has, all you have to do is look at his family. And Michelle, you and your boys are blessed as he is blessed to have you in his life.
I pretty much can throw away my speech. With that being said, I don't know who they were talking about. I mean this sincerely. From the bottom of my heart, I see people here who mean the world. I came through the ranks, I've seen you, I've dealt with you in different things, we've worked together on different certain projects. I say thanks. It's been an honor and I mean that sincerely, to be the chief here. I hope we made a small difference in all your lives. I hope we made it safer on a daily basis and more secure for all of you. I'll tell you one thing, the village itself is only made of the whole team and that is comprised of everybody. It's not one person. But I will say that your leaders that you have in this town, there's a few, but one of them is the most generous, empathetic person I've ever met. Thanks to him, I say thanks to the board. Because they're giving every day, they give their time, their effort, their commitment every day to this village. Their faith and trust and the support they give us make our job easier. Because of people like them, because of the professionals who they are, they help us, help you, and that's what it's about. Couldn't be more proud to have worked here. Tell you, it doesn't feel like 20 years. But I will say, I'm proud. I'm proud of the people I've worked with, the people that I've worked in the past with that I see out here, the people I've worked with presently, the person that I gave a recommendation for. Some of the accomplishments that we've done, it was talked about. You know, everything was there. We've done it all. We've tried. We did everything we could to keep you safe and to add certain things. Our relationships and our transparency are none too far off from everything that I wanted to be perfect. It is almost that. Some of our keys to success that I will say, we always stayed on top of liability and accountability. Got answers back quickly. My quality staff, and I mean that from everybody. Records clerk Jackie, my commander, deputy, sergeants, or soon to be commander, everybody. I can list them all. Proud of them. continual quality of growth, that's what we're about here. Every day. Try to take somebody's problems and make them into a positive approach. Try our hardest. Put ourselves back on the map. We're a safe city. President of the organization, Wes Verbis, I'm going to transfer an opening to my predecessor and I want him to take that role coming up in four years as well. About the future, in the future, we live now. I see Chiefs in this room. Chief Luter, thank you. Altac couldn't be more better, my friend, with you. Quality person. Our residents in this room that have touched my heart, that I've worked with that have touched my heart. Con Nichols. Tell you the friendships I have, the people that I see in this audience, I've got friendships from my crossing guards that are in this audience. Sherry Sauer, business owner, resident, a well-did person. Councils. They are, then you don't live in LaGrange Park. Pretty much involved. I appreciate that. Houskies. Long period. Second mom in the second row. She happened to be right behind my family, that I've ever been a part of. Now then you look at the staff and our residents. I'll go with them first, I'll go back to the residents and say thank you, and that goes across the board. The staff I've worked with, you have no idea the quality that's led by Julia and the dedication of every one of these people at this table. They're quality. And I'm lucky to say I was part of that team. Fellow departments in the area, as I gave some highlight to, quality. Quality all around us. I mean, it's all good. Past and present staff, I see the Tobias's of the world, the Vicodols of the world, the Heaven X that are not past, they're, they're there, but he's got a lot of years and he'll get honored tonight. But I'm so proud of those people, the Polly Hardens of the world. People that mean a lot to this community, came back for me. That means a lot. I'll go back to my mom and my dad, rest his soul. Thanks. Doc already said, he kind of took some of my, a bit of my game plan, but my brother, he was, he was a cop. And as you see his. Kids talk about me. Figured in life, so. Was a cop for four years before me. Hey, you might want to try this. Not a bad outcome. Thank you, bro. His family, Ellen, Great, thanks. Sons. Boy, are they trial and error in life. I wouldn't live without them. I'm so proud of them, every day in my life. Up here, very proud to be there. Next up, Colin, as well. And then last but not least, person that has made me whole, person that has saved a lot of people from a lot of heartache, the person that made me take a step back half the time and reevaluate everything to, before you take two steps forward. I probably enjoy them, be more proud. She's everything to me. Thank you, everybody. We were going to end it a certain way, but I will take that flamethrower a little bit away. We were going to hand the phone to Michelle and she was going to hand it to Julia and say, "At least I can give my husband back now."
He still needed it a little longer.
So, yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you for taking the time. It's not, I know it's about me, but it's really not. It's about the big picture and all of you that made this video.
Many times when an employee leaves their tenure here at the village or retires, we typically give a plaque, but in the police department, the officers started in new tradition. In lieu of the plaque, they've put together this beautiful statue to recognize the fine service that our retired folks have contributed to our community. So I've asked him to come up here with me. Ed, on behalf of the village and I'm sure on behalf of the police department as well, this is for you. Thank you again for your service. Really appreciate it. It's beautiful and I know that you'll keep that on your desk at home properly, right? One last recognition, I'd like to ask Sherry Sauer to come up from the audience. Sherry Sauer serves as the President of the LaGrange Park Chamber.
So, Chief, this is not only from the chamber, but from all its residents here that you have helped so much over the last few years. I know for the businesses, you come in, you check on us, you answer our questions right away. It's been great to have you. And as a resident, it's also been wonderful, coming to those cool classes and all the other fun things that you do and we're just going to really miss you. Karen, you can come up for a clap. Thank you again and this is for the...
Thank you, Chief.
Again, thank you to everybody. Thank you.
Hail to the chief. Boy, could you imagine doing two of these in a night? I'm exhausted. Okay, moving on, employee recognition ceremony, Julia?
President DiCipio, we have 12 more. I'm here to present the awards along with President DiCipio and members of the village board, the service, the employee service awards. Village has 42 full-time employees and about 80 part-time employees, all who work hard each day in providing excellence and service to our community. Each year, the village recognizes employees with milestone anniversaries with the village. We had a cake and coffee reception just before the board meeting and we recognized them at that time and we will, again, this evening at this meeting, will recognize each of the employees by name, department, and years of service as of 2018. The village is very proud of each and every one of its employees. All of our employees work hard, provide excellence in service, each and every one of them. It is truly amazing the dedication that they have in service to this community. I really admire each and every one of them. Our employees are the epitome of professionalism. Thank you all for bringing your best to work every single day. So I will go down the list for each one of the employees, starting off with Chris Dempsey in the police department, celebrating five years of service. Chris, here he is. Next on the list is John Jandak in the Public Works Department. He serves as our foreman, John. Does he have daddy duty outside? Well, if you saw John and his girls and his wife and his son earlier, you just, you just couldn't believe it. All so cute. What a wonderful family. So, we will accept that on his behalf and give it to him later. Next on the list is Peter Janetta's Police Department. He is a crossing guard. Is Peter here? Okay, he's not here. We'll hold that for, for Peter as well. Next on the list is Robert Klump, Police Department Crossing Guard. Is Robert here? Okay. Next on the list is Julia Sadio, ten years. Next on the list. Excuse me, Andy, I said it.
My pleasure.
Next on the list, we have moved to Jesus in the Fire Department, ten years. Is Lou here? I did not see Lou. Okay, we will keep that for Lou as well. Next on the list is Michael Murray in the Fire Department, ten years. Michael? We have all these lovely gifts that we will keep in their behalf. Next on the list, in the Police Department, ten years, Jackie Visalli, records. Next on the list, in the Fire Department, celebrating fifteen years of service, William Drake, Phil Drake. Okay, we'll keep that on our, in our pile. Next on our list, Patrick Hurley in both Public Works and the Fire Department, double duty, fifteen years. I do not see, no, I'm seen shaking. We will keep that for Patrick. Next on the list, Scott Habanek, Police Auxiliary Officer, thirty years. And last but not least, get ready for this. Forty years of service in the Fire Department, Rick Gornowski. Rick. Okay, that concludes our recognition. Thank you all for coming. We really appreciate it. Have an enjoyable evening. The rest of the meeting is sure to be fascinating if you'd like to stay.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we have a presentation by La Grange School District 102. I have to just say it's a privilege to introduce Superintendent Schumacher. He's a supporter of our village. I've had a couple of meetings with Dr. Schumacher and he, he does great things for our school district and we're so proud to have him. And also with him is, is the president of the school board, Brian Anderson. Welcome. And we know that one of the reasons, the main reasons people move into our community is because of our schools.
We cleared the room though, so I. That, that could just be Kyle and myself though, so. I apologize to the, you know, President DiCipio and the board for our efforts to clear the room here tonight, so.
Oh, wait. Can you get it up here? Light show? I know it's being a little.
Okay, well, you've introduced us there. Kyle Schumacher, Brian Anderson.
How was everybody this evening?
We're great. Glad that you're here.
You know, we would, you know, unfortunately, Chief Rampa left, but yeah, you know, we would also like to take the opportunity to thank Chief Rampa for all of his service. You know, I think, you know, obviously, one of the things with, with children in schools, you know, especially with all the terrible news that goes on nowadays, you know, I think in La Grange Park, we always feel safe. And that's a credit not only to Chief Rampa, but all the officers of La Grange Park. I mean, if you think about it, we have three schools that are sitting inside of La Grange Park. Park Junior High, Forest Road, and then Barnsdale. And then I guess if you count the playground at Ogden, we have that part of it as well. So, I am Brian Anderson. I'm the board president of District 102. I am also a nineteen-year resident of La Grange Park in 1200 block of Newbury Avenue.
So, Kyle Schumacher, this is my fourth year as superintendent of La Grange 102 and second time or third time, I think second time that I've presented here. And so excited to be back here and share sort of an update. Just, you know, Chief had my cell phone number and would always text me on holidays, like, you know, have a happy Thanksgiving and stuff, so I'm just saying.
There's nothing to look up to.
Nothing to look up to, but, you know, my birthday, anniversary.
You know, if we could just stay maybe on this slide for a second, you know, I, I'm not sure if everybody knows this though, but you're looking at the motto of our school district. Every student, every day, no exceptions, no excuses. You know, we've taken that very seriously. You know, Kyle now is going in his fifth year, right? And that's the time that I actually came on the board, so we've had an opportunity to work together for all of this time. You know, and as we've, we've really have associated this motto into our school, it's helped us to build a strategic plan that we'll need to talk about in a minute.
There we go, I got it.
So, we're going to cover two important topics tonight. The first one is educational and financial outcomes in our district. Very important to us is the, as the trustees may know and President DiCipio, a couple of years ago, we had passed a referendum, you know, in the, in the villages, which, which helped a great deal, you know, for all of our schools. And the other one is growth in our district. Also, you know, when we talk about our schools, we are always talking about the growth of our students, right? You know, what are the, what are the things that they need to work on? How is our curriculum orientated toward that? And so that they can be successful, not only in their high school, but also their college careers as well. You know, so I, I won't repeat this verbatim. You know, but again, I, you know, I, you know, it's not just words on a paper, on a piece of paper for us. This is the way that, you know, we approach the district, you know, each and every day, not only as a board, you know, but Dr. Schumacher himself, but the staff, our teachers, you know, and really this ingratiation of our community into this. You know, we want, you know, our students to leave District 102 being prepared for everything in their life, right? We want them to go out and do great things. And then we want them to come back, you know, obviously selfishly. You know, that's not a bad thing. I think, you know, you know, you know, as members of the community, I'm sure that you probably have talked to people, you know, that have said, you know, I used to live, you know, in La Grange Park and, you know, I did all these great things and we decided to move back because it's such a great community and we love the schools.
And one of the things I think was interesting, this past year, we had a student teacher who was the daughter of one of my teachers when I was up in Lake Forest, whose father, they, they lived in Western Springs, but the father had student taught at Forest Road, the grandfather, the girl's grandfather, like student taught at Forest Road High School many, 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 many years ago. And now she, the granddaughter, was student teaching at Forest Road High School. So, just, and she was thrilled to be here. I mean, so I think, again, we talk about people wanting to come back and while they were not residents per se, it was still that connection with La Grange Park and with District 102 that was one of the reasons that she wanted to come back here to, to do that. So, Brian talked a little bit about our strategic plan and I handed you out a document that goes into a little bit more detail. But three years ago, when I, when I joined the district, or four years ago I joined the district, we talked about looking at how do we, how do we move the district forward? How do we move kind of from that good and great model that we often hear about all the time? And so during that time, about three years ago and two years ago, we, I started on a series and actually several of the board members joined me on a series of community forums. And we went to the community, said, what are the things that we want District 102 to look like? What is the future for District 102 and for our students that are here? Out of all of that work, and again, we had close to thirty-some meetings between community meetings, school district meetings, parent meetings, et cetera, that we met with, we came up with four goal areas. Student development goal, culture and relationships, employees, exemplary employees, and process and financials. Obviously during that time, we were looking at budget deficits, where we were overspending amounts, or I should say spending down our reserves to anywhere between six hundred thousand to a million dollars over the course of the year. We had very low fund balances at the time when we both joined, joined the district. We were looking at challenges within our community, with our school community, looking at our achievement and the achievement gap between our students of African-American, Hispanic origin to our white community. And how do we close those gaps? Not just known to La Grange School District 102, it's a national issue that we see, but certainly one that we wanted to explore, wanted to address and work at closely. So, as we talked about that, we talked about these in relationship to all of our students. The lens of equity, how do we approach and provide an equitable education? Not always an equal education, but an equitable, equitable education so that all of our children had equal access to their educational opportunities. And so through that, we talked about a relevant and rigorous and integrated curriculum for all of our students. We talked about a safe and challenging and engaging, supportive teaching and learning environment for all of our students. And ensuring that our district employs a diverse staff so that all of our students can see students who look like them, who can understand them in a variety of different ways. So, that has been all the work that has been involved in strategic plan.
Yeah, I, you know, I think if, if there's one thing that we can point back to, you know, is like where we started out and where we're at now, it really was this document. Because you could imagine, you know, going out into the community, having these forums, talking to parents, talking to community members, taxpayers, et cetera, you know, and getting a lot of different viewpoints of exactly how the district is being run, what they want to see in the future, how they not only see the children, you know, but how they see property values and things like that that can be introduced in those conversations. You know, what I would like to say here is, is that, you know, really it was a culmination of all of those conversations. Not always easy conversations, you know, but good conversations about, you know, how do we put it on the, you know, how do we put the district in the right foundation? How do we build off that? You know, the other thing, you know, Kyle had said or mentioned is this notion of equity. You know, in our district, you know, we come from a lot of different, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, racial makeups to our community as well. You know, and I think one of the things that's been, you know, nice as the board has evolved, really, you know, we've been able, I think, to embrace even some of the racial, you know, differences that are in our community as well. So, we've, we've really engaged this notion of, of, you know, diversity and diversity of thought, you know, when we're making decisions. The equity lens that we use around this strategic plan has been very important for us.
So, just to take a little bit of a step to reorient people, this is the district boundaries within, within the community. So, you can see that, that this, obviously this area is all of La Grange Park. We share, this is La Grange 95 over here, another great district, you know, tonight we're better. And then this is, and my mark comes and says, you will say the same thing. Ogden encompasses both La Grange Park and La Grange, and as Brian said earlier, Forest Road and Barnsdale School, which are over in this area here, and then Park Junior High, Ogden Avenue, the playground is technically in La Grange Park. Most of the school is actually in La Grange. The Front Drive Parking Lot of Park is actually in La Grange, the school. So, we do always have a little bit of challenges with the police department, so we, where they're, where is the incident occurring? But I will say, without, without an issue at all, both La Grange Park, La Grange, and Brookfield, and we're dealing with Congress Park, have been phenomenal. The police department is great at assisting us with all of these things. Because this is, I mean, we're, we're kind of unique in the sense that we have three different communities that we're, that we're dealing and working with. And the police and fire is important that we work together well, and we have. And so we look forward to that continued relationship with all of those areas. So, this is just some data and this is small on here, but you will be able to see this on our, on our website. You can also go to Illinois School Report Card site, which has all of this information that you can search and drill down. But we do have six schools in the district, our kindergarten center, and then four elementary schools, and then a junior high of seventh, eighth grade. We have actually very little mobility here. It's about three percent. It's lower than the state average. And mobility means students who are staying in the same school from, from year to year. So, our turnover is relatively, is relatively low. The state has changed their designations of schools and how they're looking at a variety of different information. Some of it I think is valid and reliable, some of it I think is just a little bit crazy. But nonetheless, we have, one of our schools is exemplary, which is Cosette. The other four schools are all commendable. Barn, Barnsdale School is not considered in that ratio, the fact that it's kindergarten and we don't, there's no state assessments of different things. At some point it will be, but at this point it's not. Again, this is based on the state's evidence-based funding model, EDF, if you've heard of that, and how they've just determined that. Also within that is looking at the funding adequacy. You've heard, you may have heard in the past, there's been how schools are being funded and some changes to funding models and, and our school right now is considered to be eighty-four percent at capacity to meet expectations. You will hear of districts that are at a hundred percent or a hundred and ten percent and there's things in place for communities that then pass referendums to try to cut back on their funding capability, their taxing capabilities. We're not there, but we are, have moved up into a better financial standard, both from a district standpoint and also from a state standpoint, with eighty-four percent funding capabilities here. Again, chronic absenteeism is very low and our retention overall is, is very high in the district. Why? Because people want to move here. And it is because of the things that were talked about. The first part of this presentation about the community and how wonderful it is from that standpoint, but also from the things that are happening within our schools. And people know that they can come here, get a solid education, and live in a safe community that values, values them, where their kids can go out and play outside and have a lot of other resources that they have access to. This is all from the seventeen eighteen school report card, so this is looking at last school year. That's when things are updated, the new one will be actually released this summer. Last year, we had about a little over three thousand students. We have an early childhood program through eighth grade. Our early childhood program is growing quite a bit, which is, which is wonderful for us. We're reaching more kids into that program. And that's, and that's held at Barnsdale School with our kindergarten programs. You can see Park is the new, at, the state testing, which no longer is actually, now it's called IAR. So, forget about the names of what these are. During this last test, which was around for about five years, we had about sixty-seven percent of our students this year applied that math proficiency on that. The school or the state itself was actually at thirty-seven percent, so the fact that we were sixty-seven percent is, is very good, very strong. Math proficiency was at fifty-nine percent, the state was at thirty-two percent. So, again, it was a newer test. We, it's, they were constantly changing it every year and this year they've changed it again. So, when we report again, we'll have a new test and a different set of data with a new norm and criteria that's there. But these are all strong numbers to be proud of as we look at this and look at some new testing and where our students stand. And another thing to be proud of, our average class size is about twenty-one. And when we talk to people who are moving in from, certainly from Chicago or from other school systems around, who are talking about average class sizes of twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, twenty-one is very, very appealing to, to people.
Yeah, you know, some of the things to add to this too, I mean, we could talk about data for a couple of village board meetings, you know, over and over again. You know, but I think some of the things that, you know, that we're doing in the district, especially the one-to-one with computers, Chromebooks for the children, you know, we started at sixth, seventh, eighth grade, we're going to be expanding that down to fifth grade, you know, getting them used to the tools, used to the collaboration. We just had day of design that, you know, again, you should go out to our district website and see what that was about, but logistically moving all of our students in that one day between schools so that they could participate in STEM. between schools, so that they could participate in STEM opportunities, you know, in the district was quite a feat, and then some. You know, but the great thing about that was they were collaborating on Google Docs and Google Sheets between that, as they were, you know, building a rapport with each other on what they were going to be doing. So, you know, I know that we have some of the village trustees and members here that have children in the district, so hopefully, you know, they get to tell you about that day design, because it was quite something special.
And I think when we look at this, as we've been looking to approach some of the academic achievement gaps that we see within the assessments and things, we have done things. We've started a dual-language program that's based out of Congress Park School, so it's, next year will be in kindergarten, first and second grade. We continue to roll that up, two-thirds of our students at that school are actually involved in that dual-language program. This program is taught in Spanish and English, so they spend approximately half their day in Spanish, approximately half their day in English classes. So we'll be expanding that through sixth grade over the next four years.
And I would say, President DiCipio, you know, we're competitive people, right? So it's also nice when District 101, which is in Western Springs, calls our junior high to find out, you know, what we did in testing and how we prepared our kids, you know, because they excelled over, you know, their own, right? So again, we're not going to apologize for that little bit of our competitive spirit as well.
Yeah, we do, we are competitive.
We are competitive. The next two slides, we're going to talk about, you know, a little bit about instructional and operational spending. You know, the important thing that you're going to hear is, is that, you know, even though we will invest, we absolutely will do that, you know, we do take a bit of a conservative approach, you know, on how we expend funds. You know, and I think, you know, one of the things that coming out of deficit spending, you know, and spending down the reserve, you know, as I was coming onto the board, you know, is something, you know, inherently that, you know, it doesn't feel that great, right? When you're having to write reports to the state of, you know, why you guys are doing that, et cetera, et cetera. You know, this is not just a revenue equation for us, this is an expenditure equation as well, because the district, you know, as we've refocused under Kyle's leadership, you know, we've looked inherently about what we're spending, and why are we spending those dollars? This is not to shortchange teachers, or staff, or any of that. What this slide is intended to communicate to you is that we are mindful stewards of taxpayer dollars, you know, because most of our community are, don't have children in the district. You know, they're taxpayers, you know, and, you know, and it's important that we communicate over and over again of what we're doing with those dollars. If we can go on, you know, to the next slide. Yep, this is a little bit of an eye chart, you know, I don't know if it's in the individual packets, this is available on our website as well. I'll point to the bottom, right, where revenues in the green bar are exceeding our expenditures, which are in the orange bar. We're going to continue to build a fund balance, you know, best-in-class, or at least what the state would tell you is best-in-class, is that you want to have at least forty to fifty percent in reserve, you know, dollars in reserve within the district. You know, by board policy right now, we've incrementally built that up to we're now around twenty to twenty-five percent. You know, we will keep being diligent about that as we build toward that number, obviously, you know, there's going to be investments that we're going to have to make, you know, as we ratify new contracts and things like that, you know, but those are important things that we have to do. But we're very mindful, the fact of, you know, that we are stewards of taxpayer dollars, and we have to be good guardians of that as well, and make good decisions.
And as a reminder, similar to what communities are challenged with, is that we can, without a referendum, we can only increase our revenue through local property taxes based on five percent of the CPI, whichever is lower. So, again, all of these projections are assuming a one-point-nine percent CPI, which we were hopeful was going to be kind of a low point, not assuming that, yet again, in January it was going to be a similar number popping up. But we made those projections in a conservative way, to Brian's point, so that we can, we feel confident in these numbers as we move forward, that while some of the smaller, it may change slightly, that our revenues will continue to exceed expenditures as we continue to build those fund balances. And our expectation is, is by the end of this period, we will be at close to thirty, slightly over thirty percent of fund balances.
This is a five-year plan, so roughly, you know, our budget hovers around about forty-two million dollars, as per reference.
So now onto the exciting stuff, right? That's all kind of the history and where we've been, and kind of what's happening now. So, one of the things that we've been looking at is the future, right? Again, when we came here a couple of years ago, we keep, we talked about this forward-thinking, this future-thinking, where are our kids, our class, kindergarten class this year is the class, I think, of twenty thirty-one or twenty thirty-two, right? And I always challenge people, say, where were you in nineteen ninety-nine, right? When it was just, December thirty-first of nineteen ninety-nine, when it was getting ready to roll over to two thousand, and now our kindergarten class would be thirty-two years into the twenty-first century, right? So, but the board, and, yeah, I was going to say that. But, one of the things that we're challenged with, and we have to be thinking ten years out, five and ten years out. So we're actually going to be participating in a caserta study, which is a demographic study that the schools did about ten years ago, ten, eleven years ago. We'll be doing that with two oh four, one oh five, one oh three, one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh one. And that's looking at the demographic data that is in the area, what are the switches and changes that are happening within our community? Interestingly enough, Forest Road area in general is seeing the most growth in our district. We see consistent growth occurring in that school. We are getting to the point where we are almost maxed out of space in that particular, that particular building. We're going to need to be looking at what are some of our alternatives from a space standpoint. We know we're good for another year or two as we go in there. We also know that the building process takes longer than a year or two to actually pass referendums, to get all the plans made, and then to actually build ground. As you know, our neighbor, ninety-five, just did that, and is now doing their, you know, quite an addition onto their schools. We'll have to take a look at that, and look at what's happening within Forest Road community, and what are some possible places for that.
Yep. Yeah, I, you know, as my children both came out of Forest Road, it's, you know, obviously, it's a great school, just like all of our schools are, but, you know, as Kyle points out, as we look at that as a potential opportunity, we have to look at the other schools as well, because they may have different space concerns, not just, you know, Forest Road with, you know, with the growth in number of students. You know, we see this as the potential for, you know, do we change course, and do we create a middle school out of Park Junior High, and expand that, which would at least allow us not to have to go expand the other buildings? You know, to touch one building instead of five, you know, are the things that we're contemplating, you know, as a board and as a district now. You know, that gives us other opportunities in those schools, STEM labs inside of each and every one of our elementary schools, right? As we have to build, you know, competence within our students, because they will be competing for these type of jobs in the future, right? And even for the ones that may be the, you know, the attorney, or something like that down the road, they will need to be able to think that way logically, and that STEM curriculum does give us the opportunities to do that.
As we talked about the growing preschool program, we have to continue to look at what are the options that we have there. Obviously, early childhood education has been a, something that our previous governor had a huge interest in, as well as our current governor as well, and how do we build upon and make sure that we're addressing these early on in a child's career? We know that the more money spent early on in making sure that we're addressing concerns, the less money is needed as children matriculate through our systems. So looking at that, looking at other types of unique classroom needs, so as we look at schools and try to determine how do we work on personalized learning in a sense, and opportunities to get messy and not have to clean up every time, so kids can be working on projects, whether they're in STEM labs, or whether they're working on video types of productions, or working on communication skills. We want students to have the spaces to do that. As we look at opportunities for students, Brian talked about at middle school versus junior high, what would it be if most of our schools in our area are sixth, seventh, eighth grade middle schools? We're a seventh and eighth grade. There's some good things about that, but there are also some challenges with that. The students just enter the school, and the next year they're going out, and so how do you develop a sense of community and culture in their building when they're there for two years? As we look at language immersion, we know that the value of knowing a second language is incredibly important for kids, and it's more than just learning the language itself, it's about learning the cultures and learning the other things that go along with those languages, so that people can interact. Right now, as I talked about earlier, we have a Spanish program, a dual-language program at Congress Park. What are the options that may exist across the district for other opportunities in those areas?
You know, on the financial opportunity side, you know, President DiCipio and village trustees, I'm not sure if you know that, you know, our money is managed by the Township Treasurer's Office, which is located in LaGrange. So just recently, you know, we had an opportunity to have a forum at Barnesdale School, which included Leader Durkin, you know, with us having a conversation, you know, about giving boards within the feeder districts are what's affected here in LT, but giving a board the opportunity to vote, as we would for anything else, to determine whether or not we wanted to have the TTO handle our money or not. The facts are that we don't need the TTO to handle our money right now. By Illinois law, right, that that's mandated in Cook County that we have this entity. The rest of the state seems to be immune to this, except us. You know, so I, you know, I did happen to bother Chris Welch when I had seen him for the first time, you know, when I, when we had spoken, President DiCipio, you know, and he seemed very supportive as well. And it's going to be that type of bipartisan support and our community support, you know, that we need to be able to get us the opportunity to vote, as we would for everything else that we do, you know, and determine our future with the TTO, instead of having this mandated. Right now, we spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year on a service that we do basically for ourselves, and that, as our fund balance increases each and every year, which will in our five-year projection, we will pay more. And really, and truthfully, if there's any way that you can help us with this, you know, we would definitely take the help to see if we can get to that voting for our own future. The other one is that, you know, we've looked at solar energy, in fact, we're actually pretty close on this one as well. You know, but this is hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings, you know, for either us renting the solar panels that would be up on our roofs, or going through, you know, a solar farm to do that. But not only does it help us, you know, save on the expenditures within the district, but again, it gives our children an opportunity to learn about solar, and learn about energy, and learn about conservation that way. You know, and the last point, you know, is that we had just changed by vote the consortium that we go through for healthcare for, you know, for our staff and teachers, you know, that was half a million dollar savings. And, you know, again, I think what we want to communicate is, is that as good stewards of taxpayer dollars, we are very diligent and vigilant about making sure that if those opportunities exist, that we're going to take those.
Just in kind of wrapping up, we want to give you a little bit of an update, here's where things are at, we still exist, we are a vital part of, you've been incredibly welcoming, President DiCipio, Julia, Emily, as far as assistance and help with different things, so we've always appreciated that. We would like to do this on kind of a regular basis, we think it's just, it's good for you to know, again, as Sheri said, people move here because of the schools and the type of community that our schools are in, and so it is truly a shared partnership that we have. We appreciate the relationship we've had, not only with the village, but certainly the village departments that are in there, and look forward to that continuing.
If I could just finish, you know, President DiCipio, Village Trustee Lautner, I think the last time I had spoken to you guys, you know, I had said is that, you know, we feel in District 102 that we are good partners, you know, in LaGrange Park, and we feel the same way about you. You know, again, I, you know, obviously, as, you know, having an opportunity to see Chief Rampa retire, you know, we know that we're still in good hands in LaGrange Park, and we appreciate that. You know, and if there's any clarity, or, you know, any information that you need on behalf of the district, you know, we're happy to provide that. So, again, thank you very much for the time.
You know, we're privileged to have both of you here tonight. Kyle, Dr. Schumacher, you reached out to us, and I feel kind of embarrassed by that, we should be reaching out to you to come and visit us, and we'd like to take the opportunity to some night come to your board meeting, but you were integral part of our community, as we said, people come to our district or come to our community primarily, are one of the big reasons, because of our schools. And Rick, Rick and I can attest, we went to Forest Road when it was K through eight, and things have changed so tremendously in the education process today. And you're such a vital part, because parents, not only the safety of their children in the community, but the education they're receiving in the schools. And we're blessed to have both of you on board in teaching and educating our children. Thank you. Anyone, any comments from board members? Jesse Lautner?
My reputation's, I actually did have a question, and as you acknowledged, the quality of the school is such a critical part of residence and considering where they move. So, if you could, and perhaps it was up there and I couldn't see it, but with the last year's ratings, if someone said, well, what is the most important rating that they look at in the score of quality? What would be the response here for 102?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, obviously, they, you know, I would encourage anybody that would look to move into our community to go to the Illinois School Report Cards, because, you know, that's a critical one. They would look at the commendable side versus the exemplary side to see if we had any schools that were on this watch list, we do not. You know, and I think one of the other things that I would always encourage, community members or people that are moving into the community, you know, outside of just the tour of the school maybe that they're going to go see, right, is that they should have an in-depth conversation with the principals as well, because I think, you know, Trustee Lautner, I think some of the things that get missed on the, you know, on that report card are, is the people that you're going to be dealing with on a day-to-day basis. You know, I think one of the things that can get missed on the Illinois report card is the fact that we do have not only immersion, you know, of foreign language in our upper grades, but we have a dual-language program that's at Congress Park. You know, and that's not going to be on that Illinois report card. So, you know, I mean, I would, you know, again, I think that's a very important measurement that they're going to go look at, as exemplary, commendable, or to see if any of the schools are on any of the ratings watch lists. We do not have that, we never will. You know, but I think, you know, from that standpoint, I think the other thing is, you need to tour those schools to find out all of the things, you know, that are going on in that school.
And the district has a dashboard itself that's on there that pulls some state stuff off of there, but also tells the story and other things that we think are important as well, and the board thinks are important. So those, always referring people to the district dashboard on the website is important as well.
Great, thank you. Yes, Trustee Zara?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a question with the dual language at Congress Park, is there a plan to extend that to the other schools in the district?
There's not a plan right now at this time, as far as like in three years, this is what we're going to happen, what's going to happen. What we're looking at is, what's the, what are the challenges for doing that? There was some benefit to doing that there, just based on the population of already Spanish-speaking students that were there to try to create an environment that was, that at least had native speakers within all, in the classrooms. We don't have that same opportunity, particularly in Spanish across the district. Forest Road is like a Model UN, right? There are so many different languages spoken at Forest Road. And while you can easily, you can certainly run a dual-language program without a fifty percent of the students being native speakers and fifty not, there's some benefits to that, but you also want something where the community is going to have the buy-in to that as well. So I think what we're going to be looking at is, what are the options that are out there? What is the community interested in doing? There are actually, there's staffing impacts on that, there's not a cost per se, but staffing impacts, and we know that within the next three to four years, we have some more significant retirements coming that may allow us to do some different things with less impact.
Yeah, I would say is just having older children in the district, you know, as I have now an eighth grader that'll be graduating, and a freshman at LT, one of the things that I think, you know, that we did make a good change on is that, you know, now in the upper grades, every day they are getting foreign language, you know, and that's a, that's quite a bit different than where we had started, right? Because we had spread ourselves really too thin, you know, even a couple of, you know, administrators ago, we were doing Rosetta Stone, you know, as an opportunity which really isn't a curriculum, so it's a tool. You know, and I think we've cleaned that up, and now, you know, we've really focused on the necessity for our children to speak a foreign language, so whether it's, you know, Spanish or French, they're going to get that consistently every single day. But, you know, the dual-language program, you're right, it's special, right?
Yes, I think it's necessary. So if, yeah, whatever, if you could do a survey and see what the feel is in the community, I think it would be great if we could incorporate that everywhere.
Oh, I appreciate that guidance, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Again, I want to thank you both for coming, but more importantly, thank you for all that you do.
No, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you for stopping by.
We know our kids are in good hands.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, next part, public participation, would anyone care to address the board? Please step up to the mic and give us your name and address. Please step up to the mic and give us your name and address.
My name's Warren Winkler. I'm at 529 North Wyola. I've been a resident about 60 years in this village. And, you know, there's a couple of things in life, you know, death and taxes, we always talk about, and as a tax accountant, I get a call every now and then, and it's happened on multiple occasions. He said, hey, you know, Dad's on the way to the hospital, I don't think he's going to make it. And I said, well, what are you calling your accountant for? I said, you know, you should call a priest, call a rabbi, you know, Mr. Hitzman, somebody. But for Pete's sake, what are you calling your accountant for? Well, in early March of this year, I called Lake Shore Recycling Systems. Told them not to bother dropping off any totes at my house nor at my mother's house. She lived at 1241 Morgan. Died in October of 2018. What happened? Totes were delivered to both residences. I called LRS, told them kindly to pick up the totes. After some not-so-friendly attitude, I was told I could not opt out of the totes. It was a mandatory system. Never saw that in any of the emails, any of the flyers, any of the anything that came out. Called the village hall, talked to Emily Rodman. Told me this was a life-safety issue. Mandatory participation. It truly was a life-safety issue. Does anybody recall when Waste Management went on strike in this village? Can that happen again now? All literature published never alluded to the fact that this was mandatory. Everything I read was all about cost savings. You know, the old rate, they, they landed up adding a $15 charge, or it started out a $15 charge each quarter on our water bill. And then, you know, it went up a little bit in inflation, and now my charge would be about $46 a quarter. You know, last time I enjoyed this kind of savings, I think Mrs. Winkler was over at Marshall Fields shop in the Memorial Day Sale. I explained to Mrs. Rodman that my mother passed on 10/22. There's not been a recycle bin or garbage can on her front lawn since then. Her answer? Sorry, Mr. Winkler, I checked the water bill at that address. It was still turned on. If you disconnect the water, then you'd be required, you wouldn't be required to pay for refuse service. I'm not sure who that bill would be sent to right now, but I can tell you, they do accept mail at Resurrection Cemetery. Okay, just, just, just disconnect the water. Let's think about this for a minute. Does anybody remember the temperature in LaGrange Park on January 30th or January 31st this year? How about, does anybody know how a hot water system operates? The key word here is water. I would hate to see what the results would have been shutting off the water at my mother's house. I don't think shutting off the water should have been the bright-line test for refuse. When did this become a life-safety issue?
Time.
Go ahead, Warren. Give you another minute. Go ahead.
Was in 2007 when Allied Waste decided that they weren't collecting enough revenues for their services. This is where the residents of this village were taxed quarterly on the water bill to subsidize Allied's earnings. I questioned the additional bill with the village manager back then. The Rose Clippings announced back then that it was a new refuse agreement, same rate service. According to the Rose Clippings, there was a new cost, which is getting the service to the door. I tend to disagree with that comment. Allied Waste obviously sold LaGrange Park bill of goods when they convinced them to increase the rate on the water bill. The only refuse service I have ever used for all these years has been the Blue Bin Recycling Service. I never had the need to purchase stickers. At one time, there was a refuse, revenue split between refusess collected in the villages for recycling. As an accountant, I'd heard of the Blue Bin Recycling Contribution Deduction. I did not ask, I did ask LRS if I could simply pay for a recycle bin, after all. The literature was given said you can mix or match. No can do, Mr. Winkler, you will get charged for both bins. I did fail to mention that my father owned an apartment building. All his refusess and my refusess has been placed in that dumpster for more than 40 years. I don't believe there was truly a life-safety issue when the workers went on strike. The refuse contract was conveniently labeled "life-safety," I believe, in 2007, that had a cost to the water bill. And I have to ask, was LRS provided the names and addresses of all the residents of this village?
Warren, we almost, we almost done?
Yeah. Let me get back to, you know, the life-safety issue? I don't think so. The turn-off-the-water issue? I mean, you know, my poor mother died on October 22nd. I was looking for a refund of the Waste Management or the Allied Waste or whoever the Republic Waste refund in January. Couldn't get that, and I'm paying for something I've been losing. I just think, you know, I just think that this was not well thought out. You know, you, you say, oh, we came up with a great deal, it's all cost savings. Well, my rate just went from $45 to about $185, is what I figured. You know? So where's the savings? You know, I know you worked hard on this contract, but, you know, it's not for everybody, obviously. I don't want the totes, I still don't have any totes. I asked them to pick them up at my mother's house, and, you know, I think a couple of village guys showed up to pick them up after I didn't want them, the house was up for sale. You know? What am I supposed to pay? LRS for what?
I appreciate your comments, Warren. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you, Julia or Emily and I.
Well, you know, everybody's, you know, I'm always interested in the bottom line as an accountant, and I just find, you know, I'm paying for services I don't need. I don't want. Evan bought a sticker in, well, I've been in the house since 1983. My house.
We can, we can go through that. I've, I've got feelings on that, too, so we can talk. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have consent agenda. Sandy?
All right. The items on the consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes. The village board meeting April 23rd, 2019. Executive session meeting April 23rd, 2019. Work session meeting May 14th, 2019. Number four under the approval of minutes is a typo and needs to be stricken from the consent agenda. B, action. Purchase of Power Pro XT Power to Ambulance cot. Motion to approve the purchase of one Stryker Power Pro XT Power to Ambulance cot for a total cost of $21,701.42 from Stryker in Kalamazoo, Michigan. C, action. Award of bid, Raymond Avenue Water Main Improvement. Motion to accept the lowest bid from Suburban General Construction in the amount of $846,345, and to authorize the village president to execute the necessary contract documents. D, action. 2019 road bond paving. Additional work, Oak to LaGrange Road or LaGrange Road to Ashland. Motion to include Oak Avenue from Ashland to LaGrange Road to the 2019 road paving program not to exceed $38,000. E, action. Plymouth Place 10-inch water meter purchase authorization. Motion to accept the price from Core and Main in the amount of $19,326 to purchase a replacement meter for Plymouth Place and authorize the village manager to execute the necessary documents. F, action. Authorization to destroy executive session recordings. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the destruction of certain verbatim records of closed meetings. G, action. Motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the Finance Committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. H, action. Motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and June 25th, 2019, with subsequent, subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on June 25th, 2019.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Show of motion.
Second. Sandy, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Sandy. Before we move on to the next, I've just, I've got a little bad taste in my mouth right now, and I just want to say a couple of things. You know, I appreciate everybody's comments, but I, I do have to say that, that our village staff went, went above and beyond, and Emily Rodman in particular, in, in working through this garbage contract and working out the best situation for our community as a whole. We fielded some complaints, not everyone's happy about it, and we'd be more than happy to sit down with anyone and go through what their, their disapproval is on what we did as a board. But when we make a decision up here, these trustees and our staff put together a document for us, it's in the best interest of our village as a whole. And I'm going to say it one more time, Emily Rodman and our staff did a great job with this village contract, the garbage contract, and I'll stand behind it 110%, and we did the best thing for our community. Okay, moving on. Julia, village manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Can you hear me okay? I have three items to report this evening, one of which is included in your board meeting packet. The first item I would like to make note of is regarding a cake and coffee reception for retiring Chief Rampa. We are having a cake and coffee reception open to the public on June 7th from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Again, that's open to the public in this room, so we spent some time recognizing Chief Rampa earlier this evening. I forgot to mention that we're having the cake and coffee reception on June 7th. So I was remiss in that, so I wanted to make sure that that was noted. The second item I have to report this evening is that we are hosting, the village is hosting a Water Works Open House on June 13th in this room also, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So this is an opportunity for residents to come down, discuss with village staff, the consultants, the village trustees, everyone here to talk about the water and sewer infrastructure study, the water rates, our upcoming infrastructure projects. We have two big water main projects that will be happening this year and next year, so we'll have information on that. We will have information regarding our water quality, conservation efforts, and lead service lines. It's going to be a very informative evening. Staff at this table, as well as our consulting firm Hancock Engineering, have really put in a lot of work. Rick, Emily, everyone here, Larry, everyone's been working on putting the data together. It's looking fantastic. It's sure to be a great event, and I really encourage all residents to come out and participate in this event. So we're really excited about that event that will be happening on June 13th in this room, 5 to 8 p.m. And the final item is in your packet, and that is regarding filling the police chief position. This is also an item I'm really excited about. Looking at the, under the table. So the purpose of this agenda item is to seek village board approval for the appointment of Timothy D. Contois as the next chief of police. This sounds really exciting. Police Chief Rampa will be retiring. His final date of his employment with the village is Friday, June 7th. He will be retiring officially at 3:00 p.m. So from 3:00 p.m. on for the rest of the day, and then for years afterwards, we need a new police chief. So upon receipt of this notice of his retirement, the village engaged the services of GovHRUSA to provide an assessment of the police department and to also conduct an assessment of support services for the internal promotional process for candidate Commander Timothy Contois. With the completion of this process, I enthusiastically, really excited about this, recommend Tim Contois as our next police chief. So that is the action that is being requested this evening. The motion is included in the board packet. Couldn't be more thrilled. Some background information about the candidate. Tim Contois is currently serving as the commander in the police department and has done so since 2017. Recently and concurrently, so at the same time, while he was a commander, Mr. Contois served as the interim executive director of the, of LTAC, which is our Consolidated Dispatch Center. So that was a really interesting project. So he was reporting to a police chief in another community, so that was kind of neat. So he served three communities at once while he was commander here in our village. He also, Tim has also previously served as a patrol sergeant, detective, and patrol officer. He's a graduate of the School of Police Staff and Command at Northwestern University. He's pursuing a master's degree in public safety administration at Lewis University. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Governor State University and an associate's degree of applied science from the College of DuPage. He's an instructor, certified instructor through the state of Illinois through Nemert. He is a state-certified firearms instructor and an emergency vehicle operator instructor as well. And he holds us membership to several professional associations of chiefs of police. So I'm very excited about this. Congratulations. I'll wait, I'll wait maybe a minute on the congratulations, but I do recommend the appointment of Tim Contois to the position of our next chief of police.
Thank you, Julia. I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. President, I would like to enthusiastically submit a motion to appoint Mr. Timothy D. Contois as chief of the LaGrange Park Police Department effective on Friday, June 7th, 2019, at 3:00 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, now we've got a discussion. Seeing none. Yes, Trustee Lautner, go ahead.
You know, beyond the, the enthusiastic submission, I think this was a, a well-deserved decision, of course. You've worked hard for this. I think everyone in the room, we talked about this thoroughly, and to have the, the talent and the resource and the quality of individuals in this department to be able to consider for this move, I think is something that we should all be very grateful for. So I'm, I'm ready to have Tim take the, the reins of the new position, and obviously you have big shoes to fill, no question, but there's not a doubt in our mind that, that will move us forward as a community.
Any other comments? Trustee Messick?
Just briefly, I don't want to, don't want to rehash everything, but yes, you have big shoes to fill, but you're going to, you're going to do that fine, and you're also going to grow to be your own person. And what's most important to me is, is the safety and the continuity in this village, and I know we have the man right here that's going to keep us there.
I will say that, as I said in the beginning, it's a, you know, a bittersweet night. The bitter was chief leaving, but the sweetness is that we have an individual who's dedicated to our community, who has all the qualities of a, a fine young man who's going to lead our department into the future. You are your own man. You're in this position because this board and the staff have trust in you 110%. I look forward to working with you, and it's a privilege to be with you, Tim. Sandy, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Emphatically, yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Our next police chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, members of the board, one final note. The formal swearing-in ceremony for Chief Contois
How sweet that is.
Will take place at the June 11th village board work session, so Tim will be inviting several members of his family to that meeting that evening. And we welcome your family. We're really looking forward to it. So we will have a cake and coffee reception celebrating his appointment.
So we will have a cake and coffee reception celebrating his appointment that evening, as well as all the formalities as well. So thank you very much, congratulations. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Julia. Chief, I'm going to give you the privilege, there is an individual who is here with you tonight in the audience who is near and dear to your heart, I'm sure.
Yeah, my father, Keith.
Mr. Contoyes, it's a privilege and an honor to have your son with us.
I couldn't be more proud of him. He's gonna make me Terry back.
Congratulations, Chief. Okay, moving on. Administration Committee, Trustee Seidel.
I have three items this evening. The first is reminder, vehicle stickers on sale June 1st. Every resident must purchase LaGrange Park vehicle sticker for each vehicle they own and use in the village, including leased or company-owned vehicles registered elsewhere. New residents and residents who buy a new vehicle have 60 days to purchase a sticker. Vehicle stickers must be purchased by July 31st each year. Vehicle stickers are $35 per year, or $15 per year for seniors who are 65 years of age prior to July 1st. For questions regarding vehicle stickers, call Village Hall. Next item is Water Works Open House. The village invites all residents to stop by the Water Works Open House on Thursday, June 13th, from 5 to 8:00 PM at Village Hall. Residents who attend the open house will have the opportunity to ask questions and learn more about the village's water rates, upcoming infrastructure projects, and how the village maintains water quality, water conservation efforts, fire protection, lead service lines, and more. This is informal open house, and residents are encouraged to stop by at their convenience. Light refreshments will be served. Next item is Arbor Day Ceremony. The village's annual Arbor Day Ceremony has been scheduled for Friday, June 21st, at 2:00 PM. Although Arbor Day occurs in April, this year's ceremony was delayed in order to accommodate attendance by the honoree's family. The village will plant a triumph elm in memory of Bruce Sergio at Stone Monroe Park on the Wayola Parkway overlooking the baseball field. Mr. Sergio was nominated by his neighbor Marion Lynch and his friend Lori Whitman. My next item is for discussion and action. Purpose is to approve travel expenses for the WCMC 2019 Legislative Conference Drive Down to Springfield. The general background, the local government travel expense control mandate that a local government's corporate authorities must approve by roll call vote, all travel expenses is by the corporate authorities. On May 8th, 2019, village representatives attended the WCMC 2019 Legislative Conference Drive Down in Springfield, Illinois. As required under the act, travel expenditures for the WCMC conference are itemized on the attached travel form. Once approved by the village board, staff will process expenditures in accordance with the village's travel expense policy adopted by the board in January 2017. The action requested is motion to approve travel expenses in the amount of $757.12 for attending the WCMC 2019 Legislative Conference in Springfield, Illinois.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Seidel.
I'm definitely for this. It's a educational experience for all that attended, as well as reminding all the legislators in Springfield of the village of LaGrange Park.
Any other comments? Sandy, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. I'm sorry, Trustee Seidel? Yes. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Trustee Seidel. Building and zoning committee, Trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the building department activities for April of 2019. Seventy-nine building permits were issued in April compared to 92 last April. One hundred and seventy-six permits have been issued year-to-date compared to 273 the same period in 2018. Estimated construction costs for the month are about 70 percent compared to last April. Permit fees collected for the month were 84 percent compared to last April. One hundred and eight inspections were conducted in April compared to 125 last April. Nine were not approved. Permits of note for the month were issued for the following: to rebuild the north concrete wall along the south Village Market Building, for the Huntington Learning Expansion Spaces, the temporary tent structure for Jewel Asco, an interior remodeling project at Plymouth Place, plumbing work for the new Bangs Beauty Bar shop at 1016 East 31st Street. An occupancy inspection was conducted for an additional new small tenant 825 East 26th Street for Lively Bottle who's moving there from another community. The facade work for the shopping plaza at 700 block of East 31st Street began during the month and is still progressing. Work began on the monument sign at the Village Market, and work continued throughout the month on the new building at Congregation of St. Joseph's and on the new large addition at Brook Park School, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Engineering Capital Projects, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item to report on is preliminary work on the 2013, I'm sorry, 2019 street paving program has begun. The contractor, J. Darn Dolly Concrete, has submitted all required bonds and insurance documents to the village, and a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled for early May. All construction activities are expected to be completed by late fall. Second item, bids for the 2019 sewer repair project were publicly open on April 2nd. Four firms submitted bids, and a low responsible bidder was Unique Plumbing Inc. At the April 19th Village Board Meeting, a contract was awarded to Unique Plumbing Company, Inc., in the amount of $218,594. Work on the project is anticipated to begin in early May, and all construction activities are expected to be completed by mid-June. The project consists of repair work identified through the 2019 Sewer Cleaning and Televising Program and is being done in advance of the 2019 Street Paving Program. As reported previously, the final documentation process for the Harding Avenue and Sherwood Road resurfacing projects continue. All documents and material inspection reports have been submitted to the Illinois Department of Transportation for their review and processing. Final item, design work was completed for the Raymond Water Main Replacement Project. Bids for the project will be open in early May, and the results brought back to the village board for discussion and possible action during May board meeting sequence. Consistent with past practice, the contract documents are required that the bulk of the improvements in front of the schools be reconstructed during the summer break in order to minimize disruption to students and residents. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening I have two monthly reports to share with the village and one item for discussion and action. First, regarding the police department activities over the month of April. Total crimes reported are slightly higher to last year with 97 incidents reported through April of 2019 as compared to 73 incidents from 2018. Traffic enforcement is at 2,053 total tickets issued through April of 2019. Overall, police activity is slightly lower to last year with 2,927 total incidents reported through April of 2019 as compared to 3,282 total incidents in 2018 through the same timeframe. Congratulations first to Officer Tim Jania for being named the recipient of the 2018 Officer of the Year for the Lions Club of LaGrange Park in Brookfield. That will be celebrated tomorrow evening at a celebratory dinner. A friendly reminder about securing one's personal property at all times. Please lock your vehicles and residence, especially during overnight hours. In addition, please fill out vacation request cards if you are leaving for an extended period of time. The police department patrol staff completes an extra patrol for the safety of your area. Upon your return, you must come back to the police department to sign the card, which indicates your extra watch has been completed. This service is available on Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, at the police department front desk area to receive the card and to complete the card. A big thank you. Let me back up a second. This is a personal note from Chief Rampa that, for the record, I think is appropriate to share. A big thank you to all residents, business owners, and patrons of LaGrange Park for supporting me as your chief of police since 2014 November. I will be retiring on February, June 7th, with over 20 years of service. Ed indicates that he's enjoyed his entire police career in the village and hopes that he and all of his staff have made your lives a little safer and better each day. Take care, stay safe, and stay healthy. Personal note from Chief Ed. And from the fire department. For the month of April, EMS incidents this month totaled 107. There have been 472 year-to-day as compared to 533 year-to-day in 2018. Fire rescue incidents this month totaled 51. There have been 197 year-to-day compared to 149 year-to-day in 2018. Personnel participated in hazmat rapid intervention training, which was provided by a lieutenant from the Argonne National Laboratory. As part of such, firefighters are trained on how to rapidly rescue a hazardous material technician working in a dangerous atmosphere. A couple of our personnel attended the Fire Department Instructors Conference, which takes place at the Indianapolis Convention Center, Lucas Stadium, and throughout the other areas of Indy. Once again, it was an amazing international event with attendance of over 35,000, offering a great number of very good classes and training and other events. Personnel provided a presentation to members of the Citizens Police Academy covering fire department structure and operations, EMS response, and fire prevention. During a training event, firefighters were able to repair the Village Hall bike rack using our hydraulic rescue tools. During the month, the body was repainted and relettered on 1215 ambulance. The hydrostatic pressure test was conducted for the new sprinkler system installed in the building at 1905 East 31st for the new Montessori school. And three, or four items of particular significance, on the 3rd of April, in the afternoon at 5:26 PM, there was a response to assist a garbage truck that struck overhead wires on LaGrange Road and Jackson, which avoided significant damage and injury. On the 3rd of April, I'm sorry, on the 21st of April, at 8:43 AM Easter morning, response with an engine to cover the village of Forest View during a vehicle crash involved, involving a gasoline tanker truck at Harlem Avenue and 46th. A little bit later in the afternoon on Easter Sunday, at 2:18 PM, response to a home in the 500 block of Park Road for a towel that caught fire on the second floor of the home. And on the 22nd of April, response with an engine and chief to assist Brookfield with a house fire caused by a lightning strike at the 3,500 block of Park Avenue. And that's the end of the report for April for the fire department. I have one item for discussion and action is regarding the declaration of surplus equipment. As the, as you're aware, the fire department is planning to purchase a new Power Pro XT powered ambulance cot. As part of the purchase, we would like to trade in one of our older manual stretchers, which is approximately 10 years old, and as such, needs to be declared as surplus items. The specific description of the item is it's a Ferno 35A mobile transporter with 500-pound limit. Our staff has reviewed this and recommends that we declare this stretcher as surplus so that it can be traded in by the approval of an ordinance 1107, which is included in our packet. So with that, I'd like to submit a motion to approve an ordinance 1107 authorizing the declaration of surplus property owned by the village of LaGrange Park.
Second. Motion, a second, discussion?
Just, just to add that, you know, we talked about this in the work session and looked at different options, but this makes the most sense. It's a trade-in value that will help reduce the overall price of, of the new one.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, Sandy, call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. Maybe through the chair to Julia, the Officer of the Year for, for the police is Officer Jania. How about firefighters, Deputy Chief Bronowski, who is it?
Matt Dahl.
Matt Dahl. Thank you.
I apologize, I wanted to add that as well. He will be recognized tomorrow evening as, as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Moving on, Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here it is, almost June, and I'm gonna lead off by talking about snow. Snow operations were forced back into action during multiple April storms. Despite the record-setting events, Public Works was ready and set to the streets supplying 13, just a little over 13 tons of salt, over 125.6 miles of roadway during these two events. DPW is now looking forward to the much-needed summer weather. Seventy-three hours were spent filling potholes and patching water excavations with approximately seven tons of asphalt. 229 day shift hours were spent on building and ground maintenance around the Public Works facility, Village Hall, and along 31st Street. Street sweeping continued, spending 84 day shift hours cleaning 213 miles of roadway. Nineteen yards of debris were collected and making multiple passes throughout town. Tree maintenance in April spent 57 hours inspecting, trimming, and removing dead or hazardous trees. Site inspections for spring tree planting has been completed, and a variety of species have been selected for residents to choose from. 111 day shift hours were spent on the maintenance of Public Works' equipment and vehicles. With construction season in the near horizon, Public Works staff has sharpened their utility locating skills with extra training to ensure proper locates are performed correctly and efficiently. All DPW employees underwent flagrant training certification in order to maintain safety for our workers and the general public. Flagrant certification involves a written test and hands-on testing, which must be renewed every three years. While the village of LaGrange conducted a water main project on Brewster Avenue, our DPW seized the opportunity to install a cross connection with our neighboring community. A 10-inch water main valve, 10-inch water main now connects our distribution system with LaGrange. This connection was constructed with multiple valves, which give, will give both villages protection in case of a catastrophic event were to occur. Gary Moore and Patrick Hurley received their pesticide applicator license after completing the Illinois Department of Agricultural Classes and Tests. They now have excellent knowledge of pesticide applications and are permitted to treat the public right of ways. Public Works was able to have their keyless entry system repaired and upgraded to all of their facilities. This is a major boost in security for all buildings and allows us to control access to all buildings. A spring flower planting was done in front of Village Hall, and when the summer finally arrives, Public Works will do a more intricate planting. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to resident concerns. Water department operations, over 385 day shift hours, 40 overtime hours were used during the month of April, were spent on maintenance and repair of sewer and water mains. 29,340,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. 1,253 water meters were read in Section 1. Fifty-five monthly accounts and 15 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. Six water sewer inspections, 17 meter appointments, and 22 service calls were performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken along with quarterly stage-two samples. 212 utility locations were identified prior to excavation. Five water shut-offs were performed. Two valve boxes and one water service line were repaired. One Hydrant MOD kit was completed. One water service line was repaired. That concludes Public Works tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Finance Committee, Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. While the fiscal year ended April 30th, it is not the final report for fiscal year 2019. For the next two months, we will continue to process any outstanding payables and receivables which apply to the prior fiscal year. These items will be reflected in the village's annual audit report, which will be issued later this year. Highlights, our fiscal year-to-date general fund revenue is 104 percent of the annual budget and about $556,000 higher than the prior year. Property tax receipts are 4.3 percent, or about $146,000 greater than last year. Sales tax receipts are 13 percent higher than last year, while telecommunications taxes are down by about 8.5 percent. Intergovernmental revenue is up about 8.6 percent compared to last year, with income tax receipts- income tax receipts seven point one percent higher than last year, and state use tax fourteen percent higher than last year. Permit revenue is down about thirteen percent, or fifty-four thousand dollars. Miscellaneous revenue is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars greater than last year, due primarily to increase in tower lease fees, interest income, and Net West Radio System member reimbursements. And the total general fund expenditure expenditures, general fund expenditures are within expectations at ninety-five percent of the annual budget and about three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars greater than last year. That concludes the finance report, Mr. President. There are no action items.
Thank you, trustee Messick. Other reports, village clerk?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Our village treasurer?
No reports, Mr. President.
Our village engineer?
No reports, Mr. President.
Our village attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
Commercial revitalization committee, trustee Casero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items to report on and one item for action, uh, for discussion and action. SB Friedman Development Advisors presented the market analysis and residual land analysis on the Pancake House property at the May fourteenth village board work session. The village president and staff met with the owner of the property on May twenty-fourth to review and discuss the findings of this analysis. Staff is currently working to schedule a meeting with the commercial revitalization committee to continue discussions regarding potential street scape enhancements in the village's TIF and business districts. I have one item for discussion and action. As a general background, on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, the village board approved an inducement resolution for the seven-eleven strip center located at seven oh four to seven twenty-two East Thirty-first Street. The inducement resolution provided the village's conceptual approval to provide a financial incentive for the installation of a sprinkler system in the nine-unit building. Since the time the inducement resolution was approved, the owner of the property has executed leases with new tenants, including Rosati's Pizza and Inos Tacos. The proposed redevelopment agreement outlines the obligations of the property owner as it relates to the installation of a sprinkler system and the terms of the village's financial incentive. The agreement provides for the followings, for the following. Owner obligations: upsize the water main servicing the building to support a fire suppression system. Install a sprinkler system in four of the nine units by September first. Install sprinkler systems in the remaining occupied units within sixty days of vacancy or within three years, whichever occurs first. Provide proof of all project costs incurred. In return, the village will reimburse the property owner for up to fifty percent of the total project cost, or fifty thousand dollars, whichever is less. The reimbursement will be in the form of ninety-five percent of the business district revenue generated by the strip center for a period of four years, at which point in time the agreement terminates. Motion action requested. Due to the time-sensitive nature of this request, this item is both for discussion and action. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement for the redevelopment of seven oh four to seven twenty-two East Thirty-first Street in LaGrange Park.
Second.
Motion, second discussion, trustee Casero.
And thank you, Mr. President. Very similar to what we helped Posto with, and the, and the water pieces and some aging It's exciting to drive by and see the facade work, uh, being done, and the fact that, um, looks like we have two new tenants, including Rosati's Pizza and Inos Tacos, both very well-respected, uh, brands, um, and, uh, business people in this, in this Chicago area. I am for the, uh, for this. It's another opportunity where we have people investing in town. And then when, uh, listening to trustee Zora's, um, uh, report, it looks like there's another three businesses moving into town and expanding. So it's, it's very exciting, and I am for this.
Thank you, trustee Casero. Neely Collins, trustee Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure it was just a typo, but for a point of correction, under owner obligation, it should read upsize the water service, correct? Water line service, not the main like we did with Posto. It's just, we're asking him to replace the service line, correct, Rick? Yeah, as I saw water main, I was kind of freaking out. Yeah, I know what you meant. That's it, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Sandy?
Yes.
Sure. Attorney Keating?
Um, I wanted to advise the board, I reviewed the agreement and, uh, wanted to make a couple of changes. In both the ordinance and the agreement, the, the second whereas paragraph says an area designed as the Thirty-first Street Barnesdale Business District should be designated, uh, and I had suggested to Emily that we revise section two of the redevelopment agreement to add the word water volume instead of just adequate volume to the system. Uh, there's, the word after is missing in a sentence that now reads, "The developer covenants and agrees that within sixty days after any tenant's space currently occupied becomes vacated, the sprinkler system shall be retrofaded into the vacated space." And then finally, at the end of section three, this is the section of the developer's obligations, I'm adding language that makes it very clear that, uh, the developer gets the ninety-five percent of the BD taxes accrued from this property and collected by the village only until either the payments that are described in the agreement are met, which is fifty thousand dollars or fifty percent of the total cost of the project, whichever is less, or the three-year term, I'm sorry, the four-year term of the agreement has expired. So what, I wanted to make it clear that if the four years goes by and they have not recouped their entire fifty thousand dollars or half the cost of the project, we have no further obligation to give them revenue. That's all.
Okay, so Attorney Keating, would we have to amend the motion then to include the changes that you're recommending?
Just to incorporate, uh, yeah, I, we should have an amendment to, to the motion.
Okay. Trustee Casero, would you care to amend?
Yes, I'd like to amend the, um, um, agreement pursuant to village attorney Keating's recommendations.
Okay, this is a motion on the amend, to amend. Any discussion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, Sandy call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casero?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora? I have to recuse myself.
And trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes, uh, five to, is it five to one, Kathy?
Five with one recused.
Five to zero.
Five to zero. Five to zero.
Now trustee Casero, I'll take a motion to approve the motion as amended.
I make a motion to approve the, um, motion as amended by village attorney trustee, uh, village attorney Kathleen Keating.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Sandy call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
I'm sorry. What, we just voted on the second, or what, are we voting on the second?
For the amendment.
Yes.
You voted for the power to amend the motion?
Yes.
So now you're voting on the actual amended motion?
Thank you.
Trustee Casero, uh, trust, trustee Casero?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Um, trustee Zora is?
Recused.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Casero.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve committee and collectors' report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, give me just one second here, please.
It's raining.
Okay, I have two items on my agenda. One is a resolution to celebrate state's ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment. This year marks the one-hundredth anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, guaranteeing and protecting women's constitutional right to vote. The passage marked, passage marked the one of the largest expansions of democracy in the history of our country. On June tenth, nineteen nineteen, Illinois became the first state to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment and led the way for the necessary three-fourths of the states to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment, which became part of the Constitution on August twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty. This historic centennial offers an unparalleled opportunity to commemorate a milestone of democracy. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
A motion to?
Motion to approve a resolution to celebrate the one-hundredth anniversary of Illinois being the first state to ratify the Nineteenth Amendment. Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Sandy call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casero?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Okay, and the, the amendment, the resolution, or the, um, the resolution is provided for all the trustees. Okay, moving on to my next, uh, item is a discussion and action on commission appointments. We've all received commission appointments for two thousand and nineteen. I'll just quickly go through. Planning and zoning commission, William Lampert, reapoints five-one, two thousand and twenty-four. Sustainability commission, Krista Gwim, David Marazek, Donna Twichler, Anne Wiegland Kamel, Jeffrey Nie, Joe Powersart, and we have a vacancy that we will be discussing later. Board of Police Commissioners, Mary Hayes. Police Pension Fund Board, Christopher O. Hay. And those are the reapoints. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion, a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the appointments or reapoints? Seeing none, Sandy call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casero?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. Moving on, it's this new business, um, I'm, I'm sorry, public participation of non-agenda related items. Would anyone care to address the board? Next new business, any new business by the board? Executive session, motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of, one, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body in accordance with five ILCS one-twenty slash two, C one, and two, to discuss the selection of a person to fill Village Commission Committee according to five ILCS one-twenty slash two, C three. Not to return to open session until our works, next work session meeting on June eleventh at seven thirty.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Sandy call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casero?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The vote, oh, I'm sorry, the motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
We'll move into executive session.